All right, we'll go ahead and call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order today, May the 24th. Want to welcome everybody this morning. We've got Jeff Frederick from Harvest Community Fellowship Church this morning for prayer. Jeff, good morning. Come up to the podium.
Morning. As I was asked to do this, I thought of this Psalm, Solomon, end, King Solomon. He said, unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain who built it, unless the Lord guards the city, watchmen keeps awake in vain. So I thought maybe that was pertinent.
Yeah.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for your presence and thank you for your guidance, Lord God. And I pray that you will guide the men and women today, Father, as decisions are made here in this room. Ask you, Lord, to help us to build as you would see fit, Lord God, under your supervision, Lord God. And we thank you, Father, that you're a faithful God in all that we do and say. Cover us today, Lord, with your opinions and with your presence, Lord God, as things are decided upon here today. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right, we get the meeting minutes from May the 10th. Yeah, Chancellor, those are wrong.
I have the only thing under the government center and talking about the closeout documents. It states that they have been reviewed and I have not seen those documents yet, so I think they're being worked on. But I'd ask that they be sent out for review before we discuss it in an open meeting.
All right. All right, no other changes?
No other, everything else looks okay.
Okay, no other changes, look for motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arl. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, I have a partner, Chris, morning. There was no highway meeting this morning, correct?
On the project updates, Canterbury Road, they're basically doing some soil stabilization. Probably next week they're gonna start a little bit more on that. Then the first of the month, they're gonna be a closure from County Road 300 North to, from 300 North to 400 North. About four to six weeks as they change a couple of big box structures in that area. So it'll be a hard closure. Right now, there's still traffic going through.
Right.
But we posted it and we sent it out on our email server to all the businesses along that corridor, when the closure will be happening and how long it'll be while they change their culverts, their box structures.
You figured it'd be about 30 days, you said. How many days?
Be four to six.
Four to six weeks, okay.
There's two structures and we can't change them both at the same
Right.
time because if we do, then we trap people in the middle without access to their houses.
That wouldn't be good.
That wouldn't be good, so we've got to do one and as soon as we get it done, we'll do that one. The bridge, I don't really have any update on the bridge as opposed to next week. We've got a meeting with the consultants to set the bids out, the bid specs out, and then get a date for advertising and when we want the bids to be back. So we'll have that ironed out next week on the Montgomery Bridge project. And other than that, I got a couple of LPA vouchers. The first one's in your packet for rural water. The second one I just got.
I didn't understand that.
So it's not, is that for me to repeat?
It speaks for me.
You got both of these.
The second one is the, the bridge inspection amendment that we had got from the countywide bridge inspection where we had to pay an adjustment of
Right.
like $13,000.
Right.
And that just shows the reimbursement that we got back from the state. And then our portion was $2,788 that we actually had to pay after getting our reimbursement.
All right, we got two LPA claim vouchers here. One's from Davis County Rural Water. In the amount of $37,999.05 with 80% reimbursable of $30,399.24. And that's for Phase 4 and 5 over Canterbury Road. Got another LPA claim voucher here for our bridges, bridge inspections with the amendment to it. That price is $13,940 with 80% reimbursable of $11,152. Look for a motion to approve both LPA claim vouchers, signal signature on that.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arl. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, go ahead, Chris.
As far as the highway work goes, we've started putting oil down for our dust control. But we have countywide dust control. The residents that signed up for it, we started that today, so that's about the only thing we've got going on. Or the only thing you guys might be interested in.
That a little bit sooner than usual?
It is.
Yeah.
It is. We, we wanted to make a, get some hard, hard dates in and we had the people apply for it a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
And so we can put it down on the ground a little bit earlier for them. So we did kind of a start date and a cutoff date, which I think so far it looks like it's going to work really well.
I know, he's trying to get stuff scheduled a little better so when we're in the area, that's where we're at.
Yeah.
Not moving around everywhere.
No, we kind of used to chase them around from phone call to phone call. Now it just required them to all submit it, what they wanted earlier, so we can put a plan together and get a better flow going.
Right. I think the plan you instituted will be much more efficient.
Yeah, we talked about it in the highway meetings with you guys, but yeah, I think it'd produce a better product for everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. All right, we got proposed Buffalo Trace subdivision, Dennis Elms, Landmark Surveying. Morning, Dennis.
I am Dennis Elms, Landmark Surveying. We're here on behalf of RJ Community Builders. They're proposing to construct a subdivision on County Road 100 East, which is Bressard Road, just south of the Deerfield subdivision being built by J&amp;L Homes.
Right.
The subdivision as it currently exists is gonna consist of 25 homes, single-family homes, on a cul-de-sac street. The street length will be 800 feet, which is the maximum length allowed by the ordinance. The area that it's located in is in the county, but it is within the additional jurisdictional area of the city of Washington. And actually sets pretty much adjacent to their city limits. And so there is an annexation process that is being undertaken to annex that into the city. That's just getting started. So as such, the subdivision rules, basically for the county and the city both apply in this area. In the past, when we've done subdivisions like this, the way they've looked at it is all of the rules regarding the subdivisions, infrastructure, stuff like that, have to be built to city standards. But yet, since the city doesn't actually technically have control of the area, those rights away will go to the county when it's originally platted until such time as the annexation goes through.
So you guys building, you're gonna build that subdivision to the city standards or the county standards?
Yes.
As far as sidewalks and stuff like that?
The city requires sidewalks, both sides.
Yeah.
The city requires two travel lanes plus an eight-foot parking lane. The county doesn't allow parking.
Right.
And so in our covenants, we put in there that the, the street will be built to the 28-foot width, but no parking will be allowed on the street until such time as it's annexed into the city. The sidewalks are included as part of the project. We have submitted all of the appropriate design stuff to the city, with the exception of water, which goes to rural water in this instance, so we've submitted stuff to them. At this point, we've got our sanitary sewer approval, we have the stormwater design approval, and we're waiting on the rural water to get back with us. They, they haven't had a new subdivision out there in a little while, so they're trying to figure out how they want to organize the installation of the meters and stuff, whether they want them all upfront or build them as the houses occur and things. And so then, as far as the plating process goes, we've been through the Plan Commission, received its approval, and we are scheduled for our final approval with City Council on June 13th, which will be the final reading for the plat there. And if all goes well, then that'll be the, the last step.
Okay. Chris, have you had a chance to look over those plans and seen the drawings for the roads and stuff and the radiuses out on the right away and stuff?
I did. I looked at them and me and Dennis had had a phone conversation. I didn't see any issues or problems. Looks like he's actually went above
Going, yeah.
designing it, figuring everything out. I didn't have any problem, only a concern or comment that we made was after it's, I think the design is right. We wanted to contract it out just to make sure. They have some, that it, inside the city and the county both out there.
They're inspected, yeah.
Roof rolling.
Go ahead.
Before they put the rock on.
Go ahead.
The bases.
Right. All right, sounds good.
The specs actually call for proof rolls at the, between the dirt and the rock and then before that, pavings installed as well. So there'll be two proof rolls on it.
The city's requirement addresses the drainage issues because there's been some concern about drainage problems?
Yes, the city has a drainage ordinance in place where you basically have to look at the existing site during a 10-year storm event and calculate the amount of water that runs off of that site. Then you look at your developed site using a 25-year storm event. And you have to put in a detention pond that then controls the runoff from the 25-year storm and releases it at the 10-year storm rate. We were aware of some concerns for the subdivision to the north regarding this. And so because of the limitation of the number of homes we could put on the cul-de-sac, we actually had a little bit of extra area. And so the subdivision that we've got designed will actually retain the 100-year storm and release it at a 10-year rate. So we, and I have submitted those calculations to Ed Barnett and have an approval letter from him on that.
Your opinion is that will be adequate?
Yes, yes. I've talked to several people. From what they indicate, the creek never floods beyond its bank. However, there is some water ponding that occurs on the north side. Just kind of briefly looking at it, I think the problem is, is what they're seeing as flooding is what they have planned as the detention for the subdivision north of the creek. So there's drainage easement where the, the depression's located that's ponding the water and all that. So I think it was almost maybe of an issue that it was designed that way, but it may not got relayed to the people that bought the lots that that was gonna happen.
And these homes will be on city sewer?
Yes, we're putting in a new sewer line that taps the lift station on Bressard Road that was built as part of the J&amp;L subdivision project. They have a reimbursement system in place and so our developer will be reimbursing the city that'll reimburse Jason for part of that. But we will not be connected to any of the lines or anything that was installed in, in Jason's subdivision or anything. We'll be going directly into the lift station with the new sewer main.
Are you looking for approval today or?
Yeah, if we could. It's been kind of drawled out and so they're wanting to get started.
Started. I just want to make sure you just.
I've got the plats with me for, for the signatures and things, so.
Okay. Does anybody in the audience have anything to add to this? Want to speak about it? If not, I guess we'll look for a motion to approve the proposed Buffalo Trace subdivision?
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arl. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You need a signature, go ahead and bring it up to Dennis.
Dennis, you said you had another meeting with the city as well, another stuff?
Small paper. Bigger table. Yeah, that's probably still there right there. Be careful of that one.
And with it. That was Dennis's.
Probably let these dry. All right, thanks, Dennis. Appreciate it. All right, we got the non-for-profits presentations, RSD Volunteer Center. Morning. Morning.
Good morning. Say thank you for your past support and we hope for future. On the paper that I gave you, I wanted to outline some of our stats. And these are for both Davies and Martin Counties. Davies County is about 75% of our service area and Martin County's about 25%. So we have volunteers serving in 41 different agencies. Last year, they served 77,002 hours, 318 volunteers, and that number's finally starting to rise post-COVID. So we're excited about that. The value of those 77,000 hours to both of our counties is $1,976,000. And that's based on the federal volunteer reimbursement rate. They put a dollar value. So the cost of every dollar of service, the administrative cost, is seven cents. So we think that's a pretty good return on investment. Our priorities this year are education, services to seniors, and food security. And those are pretty constant, but we're really increasing our food security projects. I think at your last meeting, you heard about the Food as Medicine project through Purdue Cooperative Extension. We are part of that, is the assembly and distribution of the boxes. It starts next Tuesday. It'll run for 16 weeks. It's a pilot. We have 20 expectant moms. All the slots are filled and we have a waiting list of seven. So, and they are primarily non-English speakers. That's gonna be a challenge for us. So we've worked with translators. We have translators who are gonna come and be there for the food distribution. Very cool project. They receive every, it's kind of a HelloFresh model. And they'll receive the recipe, everything they need to make a meal for their family. And it has a little QR code. They click on it and they see Chris Clark demonstrating the recipe. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. We also have started with senior food distribution. It's the old commodities program. They've revamped that, started it up again. So once a month, we distribute very nice food boxes to income-eligible seniors. And that was yesterday, so we were driving around taking our boxes. And in our education focus area, we just finished our PENPAL program with 80, third, fourth, and fifth graders. We match them with a senior volunteer. They write letters back and forth all year and end with a party, which we got to have in person. We were very excited about that. That was last week. We'll do that again next year. And we're just starting a kindergarten readiness program for all three, four, and five-year-olds in the county. We're working with all three school corporations to provide learning kits that our volunteers will make, assemble, and distribute for the little guys to make sure when they enter kindergarten, they're ready for success. So we do a lot of other things, but I don't want to take a lot of time. So do you have any questions?
I don't have any. What's, what is your ask this year for?
$7,900. That's been, that was our ask in the past also.
Yep.
You do great work.
Thank you. And if you've been out at, if you haven't been out at the park, drive-through, we have yarn art in the park, which is a community yarn, a community art installation, which just grew and grew and grew, and it's very fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, 4H. Morning, Chance. What's that?
Good morning, and I'm Chance Berry. Thanks for having me today. Here to talk about 4H and more, what's tied to the actual physical property, the building and grounds out at the park. And I want to thank Kim for what she said. Actually, they did a great job including us. If you drive up the hill and get on the 4H grounds, there's even a few clovers that have been quilted that made their way onto the trees. It's kind of neat to be included in that. Thank you. Biggest thing we've got as we continue down that three-to-five-year plan of the building and grounds expansion, if you'll note down there at the bottom, some of those statistics. I just want to come here and thank you guys that you actually pay for the things behind the scenes that sponsors and donors, you know, aren't thrilled to put their names on, helping us pay the utility bill, the insurance, all those types of things that just aren't attractive for somebody to sponsor. And that is, you know, what our ask has always been in the past and what it will continue to be is the operating cost associated with those types of things. As far as the number of things that are taking place out there, we've been fortunate. You know, our whole goal through all this was to get those facilities used throughout the year. We're seeing more and more of that. There's actually over 132 events that actually had well over 50 to 100 people. And then, of course, we had 14 events that had over 400 people. And with that, the great thing is we're able to utilize or generate some of our own income finally. You know, being the 4H and being separate, as you guys well know, we don't have a gate fee, we don't have admission, we don't have anything that helps truly pay our bills. So as we are able to rent these facilities, that's gonna really help us increase our operating cost and hopefully in the future, come to you with a less of an ask. Guys have any questions as far as what's going on, things?
You guys, you guys do a lot of great things out there and
Oh, you guys.
help with our youth and everything else, so we appreciate everything.
Huge part of that and I just, the testimony to Davis County and the families we have here that are willing to step up and help.
Anything else, Ron?
No, I like, I like his plan to be himself-sufficient.
Yep.
Community.
Well, thank you.
Hate to think what the community'd be without some of these.
And I, I think that hopefully shows in the way the donors stepped up and generated that $700, $800,000 figure, so.
Yep.
All right, no other questions?
And no other questions. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chance.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good day. Historical Society?
Pleased to be able to come before you, representing the Davies County Historical Society. I'm the acting president right now, recently installed. So if there are questions regarding the budget, I have Jan Schuler Hicks here to give you all the answers.
Go ahead and state your name, Monty. State your name.
Monty Critchley.
There you go. Thank you.
I appreciate the support commissioners have provided over the years. Since 2015, the renovation of the museum has been absolutely astounding. I'm sure you've all had a chance to tour it, see the progress over there. You almost have to have seen it before and after to appreciate how much work has gone into there. Director Becky Crimp has done an incredible job, not only drawing volunteers, but also enlisting professional help regarding displays. Just really directing the flow of work to the point that the, the history of Davies County is now a story that is not only excitable, but it's also readable. And I think that's important when we consider, a lot of people, including myself, are, are not natives of Davies County. My parents were, but not myself. But I think it's important to know where you come from and know where you're going. So for that reason, I think the Historical Society does an incredibly good job. Some of the things we've done over the past several years, we have a past-perfect software program that allows us to put photos. There's over 14,000 items on there right now. You can see them online. Very interesting. It almost daily draws people from not only across the country, but also across the seas, viewing what we put on for display. The big project right now is our access to history. It's the renovation of what previously was storage ground horribly, I guess you could say it was in horrible shape, just kind of a junkyard. That's the right side of the building when you stand there looking at it from the street. And if everything goes according to plan, by the fall, we should be pretty well completed. Of course, raising funds is a separate issue, but we're doing fine. This community has really supported that renovation very well. Our request this year on our budget is 10,000 less than last year, is 40,000. Our budget looks to be about in the area of right at 80,000. And so that comes up to about half of our budget. We are, of course, continue to work on reducing it. We promised we'd reduce it last year, 10,000 we did this year. Even in spite of having to draw from our budget some of the costs overruns, for example, on, on the building project. I think in the future, I, I don't know if the museum would ever get to the point of self-sufficiently, but we are continuing to draw down on that number. But you have supported us so well and I have to say that without your support, we would not have what we have right now. Looking forward to the completion of access to history whereby we might hold authors' art exhibits, speakers of renown that we might invite to the community. We have a nice place for them to speak. It'll have high-tech and it'll be a showcase for the community. Not only for current things going on, but also the opportunity to view our museum, all the four floors. There's all kinds of stuff. You can spend weeks in there. Hopefully, that'll be a nice invitation to people to come and stay with us. I'll entertain questions.
I don't really have any on what it was, so keep up the good work. I appreciate it.
Well, I, I take no credit for that, but a lot of people have spent thousands of hours.
Hours, Senator. I know they have. It's, it's turned around 180 degrees.
Yes, it has.
Yeah, I can't say enough about the project. I remember the old Jefferson School and what it was like and the work that's been done. But I think the potential of that facility is for us bringing people from outside the community is unlimited. You've all done a great job and one thing, I know the remodel, but I would like to see something done with the parking lot behind to clean that up a little bit and maybe accommodate buses.
Awesome. Great, great idea. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Monty. Appreciate it. All right, Four Rivers? Morning. Good, how you doing this morning? Thank you. Good morning.
We tread way with developmental services in Four Rivers. And we'd like to thank you for all the support you've given us in the past. And we hope to gain support again this year. One thing different that I added to this packet than maybe what you had gotten earlier is in the very back pocket, there's just a little update that I did. And I would like to go over some of those numbers for you, if you don't mind. Our preschool services, we just had graduation last week. We've served 30 children from Davies County this year in our preschool services. Um, we've served thirty children from Davis County this year in our preschool services. Um, twelve of them graduated last week, and, um, will be moving on to regular kindergarten next year, so they've had quite success with that, um, program. Um, Jim Molden, our preschool director, um, says that they already have more children signed up for next year's sessions than the contracted amount with the co-op, so they'll be looking to make some changes with that. Um, so there obviously is great need there for those services. And, um, unfortunately, Mr. Jim is retiring, um, after this summer. He's kind of agreed to stay on and help us, um, kind of gear up for next year, but we think one of the teachers is maybe going to step into his, um, place as he leaves us. Um, we have two teachers and two teaching assistants in that program, plus a speech therapist who also works in, um, our Martin County preschool. Um, they do morning and afternoon sessions, um, to try to keep the class sizes really small and, um, make sure all the kids get all of the attention that they need, um, and all the services that they need. Um, had several kids this year that were autistic, um, in the preschool classes, so graduations were very interesting last week. We had a couple that were like one-on-one because, um, they just have a hard time handling all that stimulation. So, we had like six different graduation, um, ceremonies, but it was fun. Um, our Davis County Day Program, which is, you guys may know, is the, um, Red Door, uh, facility in Davis County, and we also have one in Martin. Um, right now, we have forty-five adult clients, um, who are involved in those services. Um, that includes group hab and individual hab, either in the facility or out in the community. Um, we have twelve direct support professionals right now who are working with those individuals in and out of the building. Um, and we also have a program manager, um, who oversees the program, but also works a lot of hours herself, um, doing services. And then we have, um, an administrative assistant who many of us share to kind of help us keep the paperwork up and billing and all those kinds of things. Um, our Reach Program is a program that we do, um, with typically people that are a little bit younger, um, who haven't left their family home yet, um, but the family needs someone to come in and kind of help give them some support, um, with the, their individual with a disability, whether it's in-home service, like respite, if the family needs to go out or something, um, or they can take people out into the community. So, it kind of depends on each person and what they have in their individual plan. Um, we have, um, seven of our current staff who work in that program. Um, it's pretty limited hours. A lot of it's evenings and weekends, and some of the kids are single. Um, so, not a real set schedule for people, so we kind of have people that work in that program and just kind of float in and out. Um, we also have nine of the individuals that are in that program who have chosen to have a preferred provider, um, meaning that the family themselves have brought someone to us that they would like for us to hire, um, and that is exclusively who works in their home with their person. So, we have nine, um, nine people that, that do that. Um, we actually have twenty-four participants in the program. Um, right now, we're serving seventeen. We've had seven who have chosen not to have services throughout COVID, um, so we're hoping that they'll come back in soon, and we'll be able to, um, provide services to them again. We also have a program manager who oversees that program, um, but again, she does a lot of hours herself, so she has minimal, minimal admin time, but most of it's direct service. And, um, then lastly, um, what's covered in, in our, um, building at, um, Red Door, we have our employment services. We have one employment consultant right now who's full-time. Um, she has fifteen individuals on her caseload. She basically takes care of that herself. Um, eight individuals, um, already have jobs. Five of them are, um, now in follow-along because they've had their jobs more than ninety days, and, um, the others, she's kind of doing some follow-along to make sure that they continue to maintain their employment, and then a few that are searching for jobs. So, she helps them find jobs that might be a good match, um, helps them with applications, resumes, um, preparing for a job interview, and then if they are hired, she's able to go in and do actual job coaching at the site to help make sure they're successful in their positions. So, those are the main things that we're, um, asking for support for.
Okay.
And, uh, the only other thing I will say is our, our biggest struggle continues to be staffing, um, which I'm sure you hear from every other person that you talk to. Um, we continue to really struggle with that. Um, that's why a lot of the management staff are working a lot of, um, extra hours. We have a lot of staff who are working sixty and seventy hours a week to make sure that people are, are healthy and safe.
Right.
Um, because we have a lot of people that can't, um, have alone time. Um, we also have twenty-four individuals that are in our residential program, um, and we have ten staff there, and we have nine openings, so that kind of gives you an idea. Those are the jobs that are primarily evening, weekend.
Right.
They're really hard to fill.
Fill right now, yeah.
Yeah, they're really, they've always been hard to fill, but they're harder to fill now than they have ever been, so, um, that's probably our biggest challenge, but we really appreciate all your support and, um, would invite any of you to come out for a tour if you'd like to see the building. Um, we were able to do some improvements last year, um, from some of the help that you gave us, as well as the United Way. Um, we've put in, um, a big window, um, in our back group hab area, which was much needed because it's very just dark and, um, not as pleasant back there as we'd like it to be, and the clients love, you know, having the ability to look out a big picture window and have some sunshine coming in when we have the sunny days.
Right.
So, any questions?
You have anything, Ron?
No. Tour the facility last year and the...
All right, we got Senior Family Services? Everybody here? Everybody from Senior Family Services? All right. Davis County Fair?
Davis County Fair. Um, I don't have as good of a presentation as the previous people. Um, I started volunteering, uh, with the fair in two thousand seventeen, uh, moved to the board in two thousand twenty, and I also serve as the secretary and treasurer. Uh, I have, I already attached a letter with, yes, our application.
Yeah, you got it.
And we have done a lot of reorganizing, reorganizing of the board. We've added more directors and different things so that I don't have to do it all. Um, and we have some more volunteers. So, we just want to make some improvements to the grounds, uh, with the money that we have requested, uh, mainly the bleachers in the arena, in the grandstands. Uh, they've got a lot of boards that need to be replaced. So, uh, last year was actually a record year for us. It may have been because everybody was ready to get out, but I'd like to think that it was because of the program that we had scheduled for last year, too. So, really, that's all I really wanted to say.
Yeah, that's good.
Not at all.
Yeah, I know.
There's actually people that have asked me, "Do you guys get paid for that?" No, it's all volunteer.
Yeah, so.
There's a bit of it, so, anyway, we just, I feel like that, you know, the people that we have in place now is a, a positive, is going in a positive direction.
Yeah.
And that's showing other people that they can make an impact, too.
Right.
So, anyway.
Keep up the good work. I appreciate it.
Have any questions?
No.
We hope, we hope that you guys will come. We have a big, uh, concert, uh, scheduled this year, so.
What are the dates this year, Charlie?
Uh, June twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. It's creeping up on me quick.
Yeah, I'm going to be here before you know it.
Yes. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
I have to go.
Yep, have a good day. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, connections?
And I do want to thank you for your past, uh, support. Uh, we did keep our support requests at the same amount as last year for twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, and we do appreciate, um, your, um, supporting us. We all know COVID was hard. I mean, everybody knows how hard that was. Um, we saw, um, a lot of people that were struggling so much. We partnered with the United Way. United Way was able to get money through, excuse me, uh, Lilly to, um, help people that had COVID or, um, were, uh, had to quarantine because of COVID, whatever. So, we partnered with the United Way in, um, St. Vincent's, and our role in that, um, you know, we have a helpline for people to call, so if people would call us, we would vet them, we would, uh, there was, uh, certain statistic, or certain, uh, criteria that we had to look at, uh, we had to make sure that their request was directly related to COVID to be able to use this money. Um, so, we would, uh, if they were off work, we had to get something, they had to send us something from their employer that stated what time period they were off. Um, we had, you know, we had to make sure we got everything, we got a copy of their, uh, COVID test if they were, um, positive. What we were seeing, though, was many people, um, dad was working, he got COVID, he had to come home and quarantine. He got well, started back to work, mom got it. He still had to stay home. Mom got over, the kids got it. So, there was several people that it was drawn out for weeks and weeks. Um, some people didn't get over it as fast as other people, and so they were off, but then when they did go back to work, um, they were, it was going to be two to three weeks before they got paid. So, we had a lot of people that were just really struggling. We ended up serving, excuse me, over five hundred families, and we, um, room with me this morning, but my allergies are kicking in. Um, we were able to help ninety-two percent of the people that called us received help, and that is a high for us, and I think a lot of that is because of Lilly and the funds that they had. But we, um, we helped people with over a hundred and five thousand dollars, um, and that was for rent, utilities, um, sometimes we paid car payments, sometimes we paid mortgages. There was a couple of them that we gave stipends for because they were off for so long and they needed food and stuff, so we were able to give like two hundred dollars, uh, for food. Um, and we still are getting calls of people that, you know, we kind of think it's kind of passed us down, but it hasn't. Um, we're still getting calls for that, but that was probably the biggest majority of our time was spent last year with COVID. And one of the things that we were able to do with our database, we tracked every, we track every call that we get in, and we, um, were able to look at that and see how, what, you know, what are they calling for? Do they need rent? Do they need utilities? Do they need whatever it is? And so, we can look and see, um, how much money was given out for those, for each one. And I think we were the only one in the county that was able to do that, um, to really track, you know, people being off, how many people were, um, really struggling with it. And I know there were some employers that didn't pay their people, but I know Jasper Rubber, um, we do have a lot of people from here that work at Jasper Rubber. They had to shut down, I think it was two or three times because of the, everybody kept getting it, and so we had several people that, four and five times, that they had to stay home. So, it was really an issue. Um, with our charity tracker, which is our database, uh, we have, like I said, we try to track, um, every call that comes in. We are able to add other organizations onto this. It's, um, it's a one that they can input people that they help, so we have added, um, four, we have five churches that are on this. We're adding two more, um, so, uh, especially the two churches that have food banks. And then, um, we have, um, St. Vincent de Paul here in Washington, and there's also a St. Vincent de Paul in Bramble that serves Odin and Elnora, and we have added them on. And it has really helped us so that we can see when somebody calls, or they can see when somebody calls them, they can look there and they can see, um, if that person has gotten help, that person has to sign an agreement that they, we can share that information. That has been a big help for not only the churches in St. Vincent, but it has also been help for us to see, to be able to compile all of this information so we know, you know, what's going on in the county. But that has probably been our biggest thing that we, that we've done. This year, um, one of the things that we're working on is, um, it's called, um, with IU Rural Health, and, um, we did a, a strategic plan, um, a couple of years ago, right before COVID started, uh, we finished it, the, the plan, and then we were like, okay, now what do we do with it because, you know, nobody's doing much of anything. But we were able to get some things done, and a couple of the things that recently we have accomplished is IU Rural Health had, um, a grant that, that they were working on, and they, we were part of that grant. And one of the things that we looked at was, uh, that came out of this, um, strategic plan was, um, the addiction that we have with the drugs and stuff in this county. So, we were looking for ways that we would be able to help this. One of the things that we've been able to do is to, um, coordinate and bring together all of the people that were serving, um, individuals with, you know, substance abuse. And so, it's called Recovery Central, and we got a grant through the IU Rural Health to do that. Our part in that is that we are, number one, we are, we're setting an online, up an online, um, referral and resource, um, so people can go there and refer, uh, when you have somebody that needs help immediately. You know, we're not in twenty-four, seven, so when you have somebody that, that needs help immediately and you need to figure out where you can get them or where you, what you can do with them, this will be available for that information. The other thing is with Recovery Central, one of the things that we had started was stepping forward where we would work with families to, um, help them figure out, okay, I'm here right now, I'm struggling, I, you know, I can't make ends meet, um, I'm behind, um, to, I can be here and I can figure out what I need to change to get there. We have talked with, um, Recovery Central, we're going to be working with the families that they are working with, and we will be working this program with them, so that's going to be helping as they come through that process. They will also have this to fall back on so they can learn some other issue or ways to get back into the workforce and really try to get ahead. So, that's something that we have added this year. Um, and I'm, I think that was it. Two things, um, that we have really this year seen, um, we don't have the answer for. We have a hard time finding referral sources for. One is we have a lot of people coming into this county that are not from this county, not even from this state. They come here, um, and they have nothing. They don't, they don't know anybody, they don't have clothes, they don't have any way of supporting themselves, they don't have a job, and so they call us wanting us to help them. And so, we're trying to figure out, how can we help them? Um, we can help for just a little bit, but we can't help long-term. The other issue is people, we have a lot of people calling this year that are, have applied for, um, disability, and when you're, when you've applied for disability, then you cannot work until you get disability, and it takes about two years to get approved for disability. They can't work, so what do they do? How do they pay their bills? And I don't know how many people we've had call already this year that they're calling every month wanting their bills paid, and we really don't have anybody that's going to, there's nothing, you know, churches help out as they can, but the churches have struggled with COVID, and so they're still trying to get that made up. But we don't have anybody on an ongoing basis that is going to pay for that every month because St. Vincent has their, um, money, but they can only do so many times. Trustees have money, but they can only do, pay one... Trustees have money, but they can only do, pay once, once a year. And so those are two things that we are really trying to figure out. How do we help these people get through this two-year period when they don't have family or anybody else that can help them out? So that's something that we're really facing this year. That and the people coming into the county, I don't know. I mean, we've always had people moving into the county, but usually they know somebody that they can stay with until they can get settled. But we've had people from Pennsylvania, we've had people from Florida. We've had people from, I think it was Arizona. I mean, it's...
Do you have any idea why, why Davis County?
We don't really know. It's just, it's like, you, you know, Washington is not a big town. You know, it's not something that, or in Davis County, how did you get here? And well, so-and-so said, you know, they knows, they knew somebody there and just go there. And they really don't know anybody. And it's like, I just can't imagine just leaving someplace else and putting a pin on a map and saying, I'm going here.
My concern is that collectively, our generosity is making the problem worse.
Yeah.
Davis County has a reputation.
Yes.
Going over and above.
Years ago, when I was working, this is probably thirty years ago. I was working with families and I, I worked a lot with DCS at that time. And I asked them, I said, you know, I do these people, because we were having an influx of people coming from out. And they said, a lot of people and, and out of state. They look and see, because states that give out Medicaid and Medicare or Medicaid and the, at that time, it was called TANF, and all of these services. Each state has their own set amount, and some are higher than others. And so they get on those and they find out who's paying more, and that's where they go. I don't know if that's still, you know, I don't know if that's still the case or not. But those are the two things that we're seeing that, you know, we're really, you know, we're trying to find answers for that, but, but we really appreciate your help and...
Yep. I don't, thanks for everything you do. I sure appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Coming this morning and talking. We will take those, all this under advisement for our budget times for the commissioners. We'll let you know. Thanks a lot. Hey, Town of Montgomery Sewer Project? Is that you, Mike?
Yes. I was on the, we were on the agenda for today, so I came hopefully prepared to answer any questions. If you want to go over some past history, I'd be glad.
Yeah, why don't you just go over a little bit of it for us?
Okay. Sometime last summer, I believe it was, I'm not, remember the exact date, but I came before you guys. We've got a five million dollar sewer project in the Town of Montgomery. We're under an agreed order with IDAM. So this is a project that's going to be completed no matter how much pain or whatever is involved in it. So, you know, it's something that is going to go forward. And the county, at that time generously agreed to appropriate half a million dollars towards that project. That was all, at that time, we thought we, we had another grant lined up through the state relief fund, or what exactly, SRF they called it. But it turned out we weren't even close to the meeting what, what they were wanting to give, give away as far as grants to other communities. So that fell through. Since then, we've been scrambling to find other sources. We think right now, the way it's going, we're going to apply to the USDA Rural Development for, for, for a combination of grant and funds. We're going to apply to the SRF again. And there's another fund at the state level. It escapes me right now what it is, but anyway, to, to help our chances with USDA and with SRF, we wanted to have, basically have this a shovel-ready project. To do that, we have, we had about four hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering plans we need to get finished up. So we were kind of scrambling around figuring out how we're going to pay for that, for that four hundred thousand. I know there's been some discussion at the county and then with the economic development about, about helping us out with that. So I guess I'm here with my hand down again.
On that half million dollars, was that ARPA money on that or was that?
I think so. I think that's what it was at the time, the discussion. So we're not particular about which fund it comes from.
I couldn't remember exactly. I don't sit on that board, but I can't remember hearing about it. So you were asking the money above, above the on the five hundred thousands?
Well, we've never got to five hundred.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying...
No, 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 I'm, I'm just asking for a reaffirmation of that money, I guess, or whatever the county sees fit to, to give us towards that project.
Right. Ron, you sat on that board, don't you, on the?
The, the ARPA has all changed in what's going down, but that will free up other funds. And again, that will end up being a council decision on if they're willing to support it. The engineer is going to cost four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Do you have any money set back to go towards that now?
The town could probably put in a hundred thousand. We're in discussion with the Economic Development Foundation about another hundred thousand. I've, I've not got a commitment on that yet from them.
Well, initially, you were asking for two hundred thousand?
We, we welcome anything, yeah.
I mean, I have, I have no issue with it. If the community is going to grow, these things have to be taken care of.
Yes.
To get into it and going back to, and I'm a little bit older, been around longer than most people that sat on this council. But the whole idea of why edit was put in was to help with projects like this. But there needs to be some criteria in whether it's a loan or whether it's through the foundation and, and work it out. You know, you can do certain things with the money. But I'm, I'm all in favor of supporting the project.
Okay. Just, just our financing, we think God, you know, we, we get over this hump and we get, get approval from USDA on this five million dollar project. We think that there'll be enough grant money, never, never certain, based on our criteria, that we can, we'd have to borrow, we could have to borrow up to half of it, two hundred and fifty million dollars or a lesser amount of a million, two fifty. The way we'll pay for that is our, our base rate for our sewer right now is fifty-eight dollars for four thousand dollars worth of volume a month. I think that's in line, maybe a little bit higher than some communities. But if we have to borrow a million two, or I mean, a million and a quarter, it'll jump to seventy, twenty-five percent increase. And we have to do, we have to do the two fifty, it's going to be another, another twelve to thirteen on that rate. So it'd be as high as eighty-three, eighty-three dollars a month for sewage in, in the towns.
I mean, from my standpoint, and just an update on the ARPA, I think what's been decided with the ARPA is that's going to be used for salaries that will free up general fund money, so it'll be up to the council.
I haven't came up with any ARPA money yet, so I don't have any, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm in, in support of helping you guys out with your project, too, so...
I mean, but it needs to be made clear that this is just on the commissioner's side, that the council's the one that will have to appropriate the money.
Yeah, fair of the fundings front, yeah. Sounds good.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Mike. Do you have anybody in the health department? We got the health department canopy on there. Kelly's sure couldn't make the day. She does have some designs for the canopy and she has some, I think, a couple of different figures on the price, how they build it, so I'd probably just look for a motion to, unless you got any questions on it.
I'd like to see what, what those are or what are we looking?
I'll just have Kelly send those out for the next meeting and...
Yeah, I'll table it for this, we'll bring it back up.
So I'll look for a motion to table the health department canopy.
Go move.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we got posting, the machine readable file under the transparency, coverage rule, UMR, and health scope benefits. I guess that's on our, on our website, right? Or our website? Approve it, okay. Yep. You got any questions on that, Ron?
If it's required, it doesn't matter if I have any questions or not.
So I look for a motion to approve.
Go move.
The transparency. We got a motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Ron, you got anything?
I do not.
Anybody else have anything? If not, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and adjourn.
Go move.
Motion by Ron Arnold. I'll second that, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Dennis, did you satisfy the lady that was here on the...
Yeah, I've talked to her several times.